Welcome, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, would you take roll call, please?
Mrs. Talby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Our mission statement is the Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And I need a mission and a second to approve our agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, then we're going to start tonight with a remembrance of one of our long-term substitutes, Angela Bausch. And Ms. Hood, the principal of Struble, is going to come up and commemorate Ms. Bausch.
Good evening. This evening, we recognize and honor a very special person who touched so many lives, not only at Struble, but everywhere she went. We learned the news of Angela Bausch's unexpected passing toward the end of our winter break in December. The news was quite a shock to all of us, who had the pleasure of knowing her, working with her, and calling her a friend. Once Angela retired from the Cincinnati Public School District, she began subbing for Northwest Local Schools, focusing her service at Houston, Taylor, and Struble Elementary. Kelly Samad, from the Hamilton County Educational Service Center, shared that Angela was one of the first subsolution employees when the service began in fall of 2012, subbing exclusively at Northwest Local Schools. She devoted sixty years of her life to teaching, and we at Struble were very fortunate that Angela joined our Struble family as a building substitute the past several years. Angela's work extended beyond her assigned days at our building, often volunteering in our kindergarten classrooms on her days off, or picking up an additional sub day to support a staff member who needed to be away from the building due to illness or for a personal reason. She could always be found volunteering at Struble events, quick to jump in to assist with whatever work needed to be done. I was given permission to share the following comments from some of our Northwest Local staff members. Rosie Spray, former Struble teacher and currently a P R E, stated, "Mrs. Bausch was an amazing woman. Her smile lit up the room, and the students who encountered her were lucky to have known her. You will be truly missed." Gina Sansoni, another former Struble teacher, who's now serving as principal at Houston Learning Center, wrote, "Thank you, Mrs. Bausch, for simply being you. Your service and dedication to our school district and students were one of a kind and will never be forgotten." Gina appreciates all the support that Angela provided when she had to be out of the classroom. Angela never missed a thing being in a sub. And Denise Bauer, who's a current assistant at Struble, stated, "Angela will be missed very much. She was wonderful with the students as well as the staff at Struble. She would help out whenever and wherever she could. She touched so many lives and was a blessing to all. Angela was a sweet and generous soul who selflessly gave her time and endless energy, like for days, am I right, if you knew her, to support both our students and staff members. Her presence in our building is remembered, appreciated, and missed each and every day." So I have some members of Struble here and a former Struble teacher, so thank you for coming. I wanted to present this first to the family. So our first grade team, along with the support of our art teacher, Chris O'Connell, he drew this building picture, and the first grade team wrote in honor of Angela Bausch, who touched the lives of so many people through her love, service, and dedication to Struble Elementary. And these are all the thumbprints of our first graders, so we'd like to give this to you as a remembrance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here. We love Angela dearly. Thank you.
And there's a plant for them as well, on behalf of the district.
Rebecca, do you get this? Well, I'll hold it. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for being here. Our thoughts in pairs with you. We know she will be missed for dearly.
And thank you for sharing her with us.
We loved Angela. We really did. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we would like to bring up Taylor Elementary. So Andrea Childress is here to introduce their student buddies program that they've developed.
All right, so earlier this summer, we, as a building leadership team, spent some time trying to think about what we wanted to do to enhance Taylor Elementary. And one of the things that we felt strongly about was, we're a large school, but we want our kids to feel like they're part of a family. So we were playing around with this idea of creating learning buddies. And Ms. Ponting, Ms. Tanya Ponting, who happens to also be our Teacher of the Year, took the lead, and she has done some amazing things this year. I'm going to go ahead and let her present our students and share all the things that have been happening at Taylor Elementary.
I can speak in front of children all day long, but this is so intimidating for me, so I'm just as nervous as you guys are. It's okay. Do you want the goofy faces? Thank you for this opportunity to share something. This is a program that I'm extremely passionate about, and I cry when I'm passionate about things, so I'm going to try really hard not to. So our schools, when we opened up the larger schools, it just didn't have the family feel, and we were missing that, and we wanted to get it back. And this is one way that we felt that we could do that. So we implemented a buddy system this year, and I just want to give you some points of it. So our purpose for doing this is we wanted to build positive relationships between students in different grade levels. We wanted our kids to not be afraid of the big kids when they pass them in the hallway. We wanted them to feel like we're all one big family. And we also wanted to give our older students a chance to be role models and to learn how to be a leader. That's not a skill that comes naturally all the time, so we wanted to give them that opportunity. And we wanted to build in time for fun. Sometimes we get really bogged down with academics, and we need to let kids be kids sometimes, so we wanted to have some fun as well. So we wanted to build that into it. So I'm just going to kind of guide you through some of the things that we did. We created a schedule so that this was a day that our whole building was going to have a buddy day. So we created a schedule. This is what we presented to the teachers in August. We gave them the schedule, gave them some suggested activities. Everybody's creative and can do their own thing, but we wanted to give them just some ideas to help spark their creativity, or if they needed something, there was something on hand for them to have, so it wasn't another thing on their plate. We paired up classrooms, so kindergarten is paired up with third grade, first grade is paired up with fourth grade, and second grade is paired up with fifth grade. And then we also have, I teach the gifted students, so we have a cross cat units in our building. So we, oh, yay. Sorry. Sorry. So we wanted to make sure that everyone was included, so my students in my access classes go down and meet with the cross cat students as well. We know that being a leader isn't always easy, so we do the first three weeks of school where we're building relationships and training our kids on routines, so we built this into our routines where we were training the third, fourth, and fifth graders on how to be a good leader, what could be some conversation starters, how do you approach someone who's smaller than you? And ironically enough, the big kids were just as afraid as the little kids on the first day of buddies. When I saw them when they were walking down the hall, they were like, "We are so scared." I'm like, "They're little kids. Why are you scared?" But they really were intimidated. It was really cool to see afterwards their relief. Our buddies that are paired up also can serve as a buddy room, so some of our students sometimes need a break, and the teachers can see it before they get too escalated where there's going to be a problem. So they already have a relationship with this classroom, with the students, with the teachers, so this is a natural place where they can go to take a ten-minute break, they can just take a breather, take a walk to another classroom, feel comfortable somewhere else, and then go back and be ready to get back to learning. So this created this natural flow as well. So these are just some pictures, just to show the magic that happens on Buddy Day. If you ever have a chance to come over on a Buddy Day, you need to, because our building is such a special place on that day. The kids are excited, the teachers are excited, it's just really, really fun to see. So these are just some pictures, so you can see all the smiles. It's not always just fun, there are academic things going on, they read together, they play together, they do art together. Sometimes they just get together and talk, which is a skill that not everyone has, so it's really important that they learn how to communicate with one another. And to see our older students relating to the younger students and realizing that they have things in common is really, really special. So these are just, I couldn't pick a few, so I made way too many slides, but it's just really, it's fun to watch. We had a really, really special opportunity in December. We partnered with Back-to-Back Ministries and Nate's Toy Box, and they supplied enough gifts for every student in our building to receive a gift from their buddy. So we had buddy shopping days where they were able to come and choose a gift for their buddies, and they did not just come in the room and pick up the first thing they saw. They were very thoughtful, they knew their buddies, they knew what their buddies liked, and it was really, really amazing to see them come in and be able to be a thoughtful gift giver. And I've been meeting with this group of students this past week, and I asked them what they liked about it, and every one of them said they liked giving their gifts more than receiving a gift, and that was special. That's just special. That's all. These are just some pictures of when they were able to share their gifts. So we have some special friends here today who want to share with you a little bit about what the buddy program means to them, because you'd rather hear from them than me, I know.
Good evening. My name is Kayden Farder, and I'm a fourth grade buddy at Taylor, and my first grade buddy is Zion. Our buddy program is where we get to form a strong bond with others and make friends with kids in other grades. It helps me become a leader because I'm a big buddy and gives me a lot of confidence.
Good job.
My name is Michaelio Johannes, and I'm in third grade. This is my buddy Kamari, and he is in kindergarten. Having a buddy helps me be able to make friends with kids who are younger than me, but it also helps me know how to make friends with kids who are different than I am.
Very good. Good job.
Having a buddy helps our school to be a family. Since I have a big buddy, I am not afraid of the big kids.
The big kids.
Hi, I'm Kylie Farah, fifth grader at Taylor. My buddy is Laney. She is in second grade. I like being a big buddy because I can help my little buddy have a better day. If she is not happy, I can help her feel better and talk about what is going on. It makes me feel good to help her.
Good job.
It makes me happy to see my buddy. She makes me feel good, and I like playing with her outside and doing other fun things with her. Having a big buddy helps me have more friends.
So again, thank you for this opportunity to share. Please come visit and see the magic that goes on on Buddy Day.
Awesome, thank you. Who wants to answer what's their favorite activity that you've done? Yeah?
My favorite activity I've done with my buddy Jamari is the word game where we had a word, and there was one vowel in each word, and the first, and the teacher said a word, and we tried to get the first vowel in the word, and then we kept playing and having fun.
Good, thank you. Kayden?
Building bracelets with my buddy.
Oh, awesome, yeah, very good.
Giving the presents.
The presents, yeah. What did you purchase for Laney?
A coloring book.
Awesome, yeah. Laney, what grade are you in?
I like playing outside.
Wow, very good. You do a good job reading. Good job. Thank you guys so much.
Considerations we had was putting kindergarten with third grade, so that those grades will then, you know, go up together. So then by the time the kids get to third grade, they'll have had that experience of being a buddy, a smaller buddy, for the three years before they take the role of a buddy, so.
Awesome. So will they stay? Would the idea be to stay together?
Ideally, it would, but logistically, we don't know how that could possibly work with everyone going to a different classroom. That was my wish, but I'm like, I don't know how logistically we could possibly make it happen.
So a class is buddied with another classroom?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, awesome, thank you. This is great, thank you.
Thanks. Good job.
Thank you guys. Good job again.
If you want to let me outside for the photo, also, if you have a few times you want to step out, if you can, if you want to board your board today, if you want to do a talk with your friends, why don't you share?
And as we transition, our third and final presentation tonight is from Butler Tech. So we have Caleb Swelbar, who's the instructor for digital media, who is going to introduce his digital media program tonight.
So as Mr. Gator said, I am Caleb Swelbar. I am the digital media instructor over at Northwest High School. Where's the clicker? Here we go. So what is digital media? Digital media is a video class, it's a photography class, and it's an audio production class. So we focus on using high-end, real industry equipment to teach students how to take quality photos, how to produce a video in multiple different manners, whether it's interviews or short films or documentaries, or audio broadcasts, so things like podcasting, radio, creating some music, things like that. That's kind of where we focus. So I could stand up here all day and talk about my program, but what would be the fun in that? So I brought a couple students with me, a couple of my seniors, and they are going to talk about some of their experiences with the program. So first up, we have senior Jake Derringer.
Hello, my name is Jake Derringer, and I am a senior at Northwest High School. A cinematic narrative is a video best to represent an emotional aspect of a video, probably representing a person, a community, job, anything of the sorts. It connects with the viewer through emotions, maybe it could be inspiring, it could be hopeful, it could be anything along the lines. And today, it will be my honor to show you this video. The subject of the video is Caleb Jones. He is a sports medicine student at the Northwest Career Center, and when we were given this, we knew that this is an amazing individual, and it was our honor to make a video about him.
Ever since I was little, I wanted to compete with the best, to be the best. Growing up, I was a three-sport athlete, a football player, a baseball player, and a wrestler. And in all three, I put in my blood, sweat, and tears. Everyone will stumble and fall, but those with faith in the Lord will prevail. But before every athlete comes a student. My love for sports and my desire to help people has led me to the Sports Medicine Program at Northwest Career Center. Joining this program has opened endless opportunities for me, both as a student and as an athlete. Not only am I learning about the human body to help further my athletic and academic career, but I'm also satisfying my wish to help people along the way. Never will I grow tired of learning from others, learning from my mistakes, and learning about myself. But to learn about yourself, you must know your core values. To know your core values, you must know your desire. And to know your desire, you must challenge yourself. But above all, love the ones around you, accept the ability that God has given you. Through this Butler Tech program, I will be able to achieve this in much more. Upon my graduation, I plan to attend the University of Cincinnati or leave Ohio State University to further my education on the human body and soon become a sports medicine doctor. But until then, my name is Caleb Jones, and I have one question for you. What are you willing to do to be the best?
In my opinion, in creating this video, it wasn't just us being able to represent our creativity in making the video, we were also able to represent who Caleb Jones is as an individual. And that was what was so great to me while creating this video. And thank you.
That was awesome. What are your plans for next year?
When I graduate, I intend on joining the United States Military.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi. There we go. Hi, my name's Lily Diebold, and I'm also a senior at Northwest Digital Media, though I go, Colrain High School is my home school. So today, I'm going to talk to you guys about my experience competing in B P A, as well as some of the really cool outside opportunities where I've been able to apply the skills that I've learned at digital media. So first, for B P A, last year, I competed with my two other friends in the video production competition. We first competed locally, and then we went to state, and then we placed seventh in the nation. And for our topic, we were assigned with making a video about an endangered species of our choice, which we chose the adorable red pandas, as you can see on here, and just talking about why they're endangered and what people can do to help them. And this process was really great for all of us. We learned so much about the pre-production, post-production, and the filming of all the interviews and B-roll for this, and we even got to meet with people that work at the Cincinnati Zoo, and those photos you see right there, we shot like inside the red panda enclosure, and we met with the keeper there for the red pandas, and it was just a really great opportunity. And like I said, this video got a seventh place in the nation when we competed at the National Leader Conference in Anaheim, California, and I'm just so grateful for this opportunity. And then, along with what I've learned in digital media and with the skills that I got from B P A, I have been able to do so many things outside of class. One thing you might recognize on here, if any of you have kids that are in the district, is I work for Chris Armstrong at the sports section. We do sports portraits of your kids' teams and their individual photos. I joined her as an assistant, but since then, I've been able to work out to a photographer, and I get to work with all these great kids and take their adorable sports pictures and their team photos. I also started my own personal branding called Shots by Lily, where I've done senior photos of my friends. And also this year, I was able to do a project that I'm really proud of. If you saw it online, I created the hundredth video for Colrain High School, where I talked to alumni, students, and teachers about just why they love Colrain High School so much, to just celebrate the community of Colrain for its hundredth anniversary, and just give some good press out there for why this school is so great and why I love it so much. And just some other cool things I've been able to do this past, I think it was in January, I got to be on a film, I was a production assistant on a film set, and I got to see how things are run professionally. Over the summer, I was on a commercial set for Betfred, and it's just been, I've been able to do so many really great opportunities, and I'm really happy with everything that I've learned in this class, and it was just such a great experience to be part of. So thank you guys for hearing about digital media, and I hope you guys can see just why we love this program so much.
Thank you. Lily, what are your plans next year?
I'm going to N K U to study electronic media and broadcasting.
Awesome. Well, good luck to both of you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Nancy, student achievement?
Yeah, we have a few things for student achievement. We'll start with Montford Heights Elementary. They have seven students there who were nominated for the O L E M A Read Award. That stands for Ohio Educational Library and Media Association. And to be nominated, you have to meet two of the following four criteria: enthusiasm for reading, enthusiasm for sharing books with others, reading independently on a voluntary basis, or using the library services frequently. So these students were nominated by Alice Bearsfeld, who was a Hamilton County Children's Librarian at the Westport Branch. And the students who received this award then get a gift card and a certificate. And their names are up on the slide, as you can see. So we want to congratulate these bookworms, and in the words of author Lloyd Alexander, "Keep reading, it's one of the most marvelous adventures that anyone can have." Next up, we have Montford Heights Elementary. Would also like to acknowledge eight students who competed in the Queen City Classic Chess Tournament this weekend at Paycor Stadium. And I don't think we have the result yet. When I looked on the site, they still didn't have them listed, so hopefully we'll get those next time. And then Pleasant Run Middle School would like to honor their students who have achieved honor roll status. Now, to be on honor roll, you can have high honors, which is a GPA of 4.0. You can have first honors, which is a GPA of 3.5 to 3.9, or you can have second honors with a GPA of 3.0 to 3.49. So the eighth grade had twelve students who achieved high honors. They had thirty-seven students in the eighth grade who received first honors, and forty-two students in the eighth grade who received second honors. P R M S seventh grade had twenty-five students who received high honors, thirty-two students with first honors and forty-three with second honors. And then the sixth grade at P M R S had nineteen students who achieved high honors, forty-six with first honors, and thirty with second honors. So we want to congratulate these students who are hardworking, self-disciplined, and goal-driven, and we hope for continued success in the next semester for them. We also would like to congratulate the P M R S Business Professionals of America students. As you recall, the B P A students participate in more than fifty Workplace Skill Assessment Program events or competitions. They start at the local level and have the opportunity to advance to the national level, depending upon how well they compete. So these students have all advanced to the national level, and they will participate in the Nationals in Chicago from May tenth to the fourteenth. So we want to congratulate them, best wishes at the Nationals, and we hope that their hard work and dedication is rewarded at the national competition. We also have students from Colrain Middle School who have participated in the B P A state competition and have qualified for the national competition. And their names are up here in their categories, and we also wish them best wishes at the Nationals, and we hope their skills and talents shine at the Nationals. Next, we have Northwest High School. That we would like to congratulate them for their school DECA members, who will move on to the International Conference in Anaheim, California. As you recall, DECA is a career and technical student organization that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs with a career interest in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. So for Northwest High School, we have Kevin Galanis Gonzalez, who was elected one of the five Ohio State DECA executive officers this past weekend in Columbus, Ohio. And then we have the team of Cody Harmon, Kevin Gonzalez, and Deacon Johnstone, who placed fourth in the Startup Business Plan and earned a spot at the International Conference in Anaheim. And then we also have the Knight Pop-Up Spirit Shop, which earned Gold Recertification for School-Based Enterprise. And Kalia Smith and Lily McFarland will represent Northwest at the DECA International Conference in Anaheim. And last, we have Leila Powell and Demilla Ackman for placing top ten in the Independent Business Plan. So we congratulate them, all of them, on an awesome job, and we wish them the best of luck in California. Struble Elementary, third, fourth grade class, had the opportunity to go visit the Cincinnati Museum Center. The children there were able to experience Omnimax Theater, the Natural History and Science Museum, and the History Museum. And all the children were on their best behavior and showed their blue J vest and represented the building well. And the children and adults who came back from the excursion found their interest to be piqued and could not wait to go back for another adventure to continue their learning. So we're glad that they enjoyed that experience. Next, we have three students from Pleasant Run Elementary that we would like to congratulate on their accomplishments. First, we have Chevillee, a second- First, we have Chevillee, a 2nd grader, who has been the top student of the IXL Leader Board for the past six weeks. As you remember, IXL is a language arts and math skill-based learning site that helps children identify their strengths and weaknesses. Next, we have Alex Ray, a kindergartner, who is a model student with his enthusiasm for learning. Alex currently holds the record in the class for the highest level in Boost, which is the Core Knowledge Language Arts Student Support Site. And then we have 4th grader Adriana Ward, who submitted entry to the Storyworks Contest. Storyworks is a scholastic program that challenges students in reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language domains to support common core language arts skills. And so Adriana read her story and entered a prompt in writing that showed her understanding of the story, and she received an excellent rating. So excellent work for these three students and made their example inspire others. Coleraine Elementary, we have Sadiam Dahal, who got 4th place, or made it to the 4th round in the Citywide Spelling Bee. So congratulations to him. And then in the area of citizenship for PRMS, we had 18 students who received the Cardinal Flyby Reading, or, I'm sorry, Cardinal Flyby Rewarding Excellence SOAR Behavior Expectations for every week in March. SOAR stands for Students Who Are Safe, Take Ownership, Achieve, and Are Respectful. So we're happy that they let their light shine so that they can give other people permission to do the same, and we thank them for being role models. White Oak Middle School, we had 246 students who had a GPA of 3.6 or higher for the first semester, and this allowed them to earn free Reds tickets. So we congratulate them on this accomplishment, and we hope that they can cheer the Reds on to be as successful this season as they have been this first semester. And then Houston Early Learning Center will have a spring concert on Wednesday, March 27. The AM and PM classes will perform two vocals with props and movements. Their theme is "At the Zoo," and they will have a special guest of the Lions Roar Band from St. Joe University, Mount St. Joe University, to help with their musical entertainment. So everybody look forward to that, and please go see it if you have time. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you. I love this new format, and I love that there's pictures and the names up there and everything. So thank you for that.
Lindsey.
Thank you. Wonderful. I love that. Yeah, and I know this is just a small portion of all the great things that are going on every day, so let's get them out there. Thank you. Any other Butler Tech updates?
Yes, I do. I just want to, Nancy made a couple of comments about the kids going to Nationals, and I don't know if people realize how big of a deal that is. I mean, that's as big as any of the athletic teams in that, when state, and, you know, and do this kind of stuff. This is really a big deal for these kids, you know, when they go to Nationals. Like Lilly came in 7th place out of everybody in the country. I mean, that is, that is so exciting, you know, that they do that and can do that. But that leads me into, we got the final counts for kids within Butler Tech applying. There was 2,800 applicants for 1,200 spots. So there's 1,600 kids that we have to turn away because we don't have enough programming. So we are going to have three building projects coming up the next year and a half, which will service about another 700 students. So then we're down to about 900 kids that apply for this, and they can't get into these programs because they're maxed out. So, I was up in Washington DC for four days, and we're at the Policy Seminar, and what that is, is Congress votes on money that goes to career tech schools across the country, and they give out about $2 billion. And that's still not enough. We have career tech schools that are turning kids away that want to apply and get jobs and get educated. So we went up there and asking for more money to be put towards career tech, so we can not have 7, 8, 900 kids that we have to turn away that want to do these programs. And it was a good turnout, and we had, you know, they vote on it probably in three or four weeks, so we'll see if our hard work worked out or not, and see how much money they're going to put towards it. So, other than that, that's all we have.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank Lilly and Caleb. Those guys are, they're so professional, they speak so well. And then, you know, that just gets them ready to go into the workforce, whatever they decide to do. But they did a great job.
Thanks.
Nicole, the Ohio Legislature has been on primary season break. They've been out the last several weeks, so there's nothing new.
Okay, thank you. Any reports?
I have nothing tonight.
I don't have any community comments?
So moving into the consent items, we will start with personnel, move to business, and then curriculum.
Good evening. We seek approval for the following: four retirements, seven resignations, one disability retirement, two initial appointments, and various supplemental items.
For donations, we have Switzer Engineering Laboratory donating money for math and science education to Coleraine Elementary. We have Dick's Sporting Goods donating money for the football program at Northwest High School. And we have Susan's Getaways donating 700 pairs of solar eclipse glasses to Montford Heights Elementary. We have some contracts for Coleraine High School Prom. We have the OHSAA Coleraine High School La Salle Football Contract for the 24 and 25 seasons. And we also have some contracts for SHP and Klinger's, which are preliminary architect and engineering services at Coleraine High School. And Houston for site work related to the master facility plan. These things are for, like, site planning, topographic surveys, utility surveys, title exams, plot consolidation, and easements. Then also for the business, we have a resolution to advertise and accept bids for Coleraine High School's stadium sewer and water improvements. This will address the plumbing issues that closed the restrooms at the stadium last year, and it brings the water and sewer lines up to code and provides additional capacity for future expansion.
Good evening from the Curriculum Department. This evening, we're asking for your approval of the kindergarten through 5th grade elementary language arts adoption of Amplify CKLA. We also have a out-of-state field trip basketball to Tennessee during the winter break for Coleraine High School that we're asking for your approval on.
So with that, the Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution expressing an intent to advertise and take bids for Coleraine High School Stadium Sewer and Water Improvements Project, and authorizing the Superintendent Treasurer to pursuant to applicable laws to proceed with commencement of such process as needed to solicit construction bids, and with the other consent items as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have just one question, Chris. Where are we with the Coleraine Plaza, the asphalt-cement combo thing that we were going to do? I know you had said something about the weather, but it's been so warm.
Well, and plus, we want to get to a season where we can pour concrete, and we'll have to protect that without students walking through it or making hearts in it. And actually, the asphalt plants typically open up in April, and we'll have to do the asphalt first and then the concrete.
Okay, but then the concrete will be like after school ends, or?
Yes.
Okay, somebody will put their hand in there, and they're, okay, all right, thank you.
On the, the planning work around the, at Coleraine High School, can you just talk a little bit about why we're doing that now, and what, it doesn't mean that we're trying to move kids from Northwest or anything around the master facility, but why it's important that we do that work?
Right, so it all started with the, having to close the restrooms down because of the failure of sewer pumps. Right now, with the elevation of the stadium, we have to use sewer pumps to pump the sewage uphill. Those failed, so instead of spending money on sewer pumps that will eventually go away when we move forward with any other kind of construction, and also provide the capacity, we've talked several times about the, a field house that is, money's being raised by the booster group. We wouldn't have capacity with the existing sewer pumps. So instead of replacing those, we've opted to think ahead and go ahead and put in a gravity sewer through the property that we purchased several years ago next to the entrance at Pull Road. So while doing that, you also run into other issues of, Coleraine High School has actually five separate plots, and the sewer district and the water department will not allow you to run water lines and sewer lines across plots. So therefore, we have to go through the process of combining those plots. Also, talking to the athletic department and the boosters, and looking at the locations of where they would like to put the field house, it makes more sense to move the field house up maybe towards the tennis courts, which requires a little bit more planning involved to make sure that we can move forward with that project and not interfere with a future project of a high school.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
First, I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of and approve the regular board meeting minutes from March 11th. We also have our February financials. Our all-funds balance was $94 million. Our general fund under reserve balance is $27 million. Our revenues year-to-date are at $82 million, or at 73% through our projection. That is up from a month ago at 52% because we were able to receive first-half property tax revenues. And our expenditures are at $94 million, or at 69% through the year. Our investment-weighted average return is 4.15%. And our list of monthly bills, we have our routine monthly bills, as well as some auxiliary and grant fund payments. And then finally, we have our quarterly appropriation resolution to approve. Mainly, this is bringing in different grants and increases that you've already approved at different board meetings, but pulled all together, we do a quarterly update with the county every quarter, and this will be at $177.8 million. So with that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions for Amy?
Thank you.
We have two items for information tonight. The first one, I'll let Curriculum introduce, the textbook adoption for Advanced and Honors Biology, the process and the resource that they're recommending.
Hello again. It's textbook season, and this evening, I have Assistant Director Emily Doblinger and Instructional Coach Kristin Andrews here. They led our high school biology teachers in review of their current resource and selection and recommendation of the HMH Science Dimensions Biology Program. Tonight is just for information. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or to either of them. The resource is outside, was available this evening for parent review, and will continue to be available if you have questions or concerns. If there's anything you'd like to know about the process, both of those ladies are here tonight to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have questions? Thank you.
And then we have our Neola Board Policy Revisions. So it's that season where we're doing our update for the winter-spring. The policies are listed on here, and they are the redline copies, so as you review those, if you have any questions about them, just let me know between now and the next meeting, and we'll have those on for approval at the next meeting. And just to give a couple of updates, from a date perspective, just to remind people that this Friday begins spring break for the district, so students will be off starting on Friday through the next week of Friday, April 5th. Just a reminder to everyone that due to the eclipse, we have closed Northwest for that day, so students and staff do not report on Monday, April 8th. They will return on Tuesday, April 9th. Just to get a date out there, more communication will be coming out, but last year, we did a community day at both high schools, where the high schools and middle schools and elementaries came together with an spring event. That event is repeating this year. It's going to look a little different this year than it did in previous years, well, last year, because it was the first year we did it, but Coleraine High School is going to incorporate a lot around the 100-year. And so those will be both on April 18th at each respective high school. So we'll get those on the calendar and communication will start coming out promoting those events. I know the Coleraine Gala was a huge success, and I know that we had multiple board members there that will probably speak to that, but it was a wonderful event and a huge success for the Coleraine community, and it was amazing to see the success celebrated the way it was. And then just to continue a success story, our last thing to celebrate is that Houston Elementary, or Houston Early Learning Center, every so often, it gets evaluated by the state for its star rating. It just went through a reevaluation of its program and maintained its five-star rating. So our preschool continues to be a five-star preschool that continues to set our students up for success, and students who attend our preschool who move into kindergarten perform very well in our district. So we're very proud of that program.
Thank you.
Nicole, just to echo what Daryl said about what a wonderful evening. It was just, just an amazingly positive thing. As Daryl and I discussed, there is no news media there to cover such a positive thing.
Unfortunately not.
But, but if there had been a beating or something, there would have been every news channel in southwest Ohio. So everything was good, and I'm not sure how much they raised, but the original goal was to have 400 people, and it ended up being 551. And all the profits go to the new athletic training facility, but there's still a long way to go on getting the money for that. That's it.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Chris said. It was a great night, saw a lot of people that I hadn't seen in years, and it was, I think, everybody was happy that they were there and the success on it. Hopefully, they could do it again next year, you know, would be great. I know it's a lot of time and a lot of work, but it was well worth it, and it was done upright. And I just want to say good luck to our athletic teams who are coming up in the spring, track season coming up, so just want to wish good luck to both the high schools and all the athletes.
Good, thank you.
I just really enjoyed hearing about the Learning Buddies Program. I think a great way to develop citizenship among the school, and to let kids know that small acts of kindness can lead to great things. You don't have to do extraordinary things to make a difference in the world. Everyone enjoyed hearing that presentation.
Yeah, I want to thank Andrea and Tanya for bringing the kids here this evening. I know, I'm friends with Tanya, and I know when this started, like, there was just an invigor in her about this, and to see, I talked to her right after the first meeting, and, you know, she was just over the moon about it, and like she said, she's very passionate about it. So it'd be interesting to see, does that plan on spreading to other buildings, possibly?
They continue to talk and collaborate. Every building kind of has their own kind of projects that they take on, so as they continue to cross-pollinate, I'm sure we'll see other things pop up.
Sure. Want to thank the kids come from Butler Tech. I wasn't at the gala, my son was getting married, so that was probably the only excuse I could give that would be acceptable. But one of the digital students filmed my son's wedding, and he did an amazing job. Those guys do great work. An amazing job. And other than that, everybody have a safe spring break. Come back safe and enjoy the eclipse.
Also, just, the gala was amazing, and thank you to everyone that helped put that on. It was a great time, and I also hope that it can continue. I just want to thank Karen for coming and her staff that came. Can't be easy to stand up there and speak about someone who meant so much, and we just know how much Angela meant to your school, so thank you for being here. And then just the Buddy Program and the Butler Tech students, really appreciate them speaking, and thank you for, Curriculum, for allowing parents to come and read through and being transparent with our new books and that, so appreciate everyone's time. And then also, I just wanted to remind people- And then also, I just want to remind people that our boosters organizations and our alumni associations and our high schools all have Facebook pages that share a lot of really cool information and a lot of things that you can support. Both high schools put out quite a bit through those Facebook pages. So just remind people to go and follow those and find ways to be involved. And that's all. Thank you.
The next meeting will be a location change?
Yeah. So our April meeting, on April 15, will be at Colrain High School. We have multiple presentations that night for celebration of our staff as well as a proclamation for Colrain High School. So we'll be at Colrain High School for the April meeting.
Did you want to mention about the glasses? Since we mentioned Montford Heights.
Yeah. Just to clarify for the district, Montford Heights had a donation of some of the eclipse glasses. The district purchased glasses for the rest of the K-12 students. So those will be going home later this week. So there will be some instruction as well as glasses so that all of our students are prepared for the event on April 8, weather permitting.
Might stress to Daryl that these are just little cardboard things with the lens. People think, oh my gosh, you bought glasses for 1,200 or 8,000 students.
They are not virtual reality quality.
I need a motion in a second to move to executive session.
And tonight, executive session is to discuss employment and or discipline of a public employee as well as evaluation of superintendent.
So moved. Second.
Chris?
Under discussion.
Try, can you join me again?
All right. I didn't, I didn't touch you. It's under discussion.
All right. That passes 5 to 0. Just a reminder that we will move into executive session. And when we return, no further business will be discussed. Thank you.